All right, welcome. I'd like to call the meeting of the January 6, 2014, Whately School Committee to order. And we'd like to start with reviewing and approving the minutes from December 2.
I move we accept the minutes of December 2, 2013.
I'd like to propose one change. There was an indication about the increase in funding we're receiving for lunches because of our adoption of the Healthy Choice. And it says an increase of .6, and I imagine that-
Six cents per meal.
It's supposed to be six cents?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to, with that revision, vote to approve the minutes?
Aye.
All in favor. And turn on to Patty, the Healthy Patty, come out for her financial statement, please.
Okay, well, you've seen the warrants tonight. You had your, we have payroll warrants, our monthly expenses, central office warrant, fiscal agent payroll, school lunch warrant, school choice, which pays our tuitions, our REAP grant, after-school expenditures, and circuit breaker for our sped transportation. You also have before you the December report for our results, and you can see on page one, we are over $98.51 in our school committee expense. This is due to our paying our share of the printing of the teacher and instructional assistance contracts, which was $272.63. Then the only other variance we have is on the bottom of page four, adaptive PE. This is a new service that was prescribed in a student's IEP, so this variance will continue to increase each month as the student continues to receive services.
Any questions for Patty?
No.
All right, thank you. Then we turn to public comment. All right, stay safe out there, cold and icy, and we'll move to discussion items. There's three of these. One involves the budget, one involves outdoor lighting, and one the sprinkler system. Any particular order that you would like to take those up?
I would suggest that I can give you the quote that we have for the outdoor lighting because that's fairly quick.
Okay, please do.
So let me pass these out, these quotes.
Are they two each?
No, they're stapled, one each. So if you remember, there was a question about installing some additional lights out by the circle, and the school committee had asked about that installation for light poles. So Bob Lesko was able to get this quote, which is install three 12-foot poles with induction light fixtures. This includes the trenching for the conduit, pole bases, and permitting fees. And the total amount is $16,110.
And can you remind us where the poles would go?
They would go, if you were looking at the south side, out by the field area by-
On the other side of the traffic.
Right.
Other side of the island.
The island.
All right. What would need to be done at this point regarding this?
Well, you could look at it in a couple of ways. You could propose it as the deadline for capital expenditures is January 19. You could suggest it as an article for capital expenditure.
Right.
You can table it and not do anything with it, or you can use, you know, current school choice money. So those, I would say, are your three options.
Do you have any thoughts on?
I don't see us taking it out of school choice. I think it's a lot of money to begin with. And we, I think we pretty much agree that there aren't that many occasions when we have a real problem with lighting. I don't, I think it wouldn't hurt if we proposed something for capital improvement.
Since it's, I think I agree that, particularly since the occasions where this, where this is most in need are town functions making use of elementary school, you know, for town meetings or larger performances and things like that, that it could be something that there's a general town benefit to. You are on our capital committee this year. Would you put it forward, please, with the administration's assistance?
I think we have to submit an application.
Right. I have, Lynn has contacted us and was waiting for tonight's meeting, and I was going to get in touch with her-
Great.
Depending upon what you decided on. But we can write an article for the warrant, for capital expenditure.
All right, let's see what the town thinks.
Okay, so you're suggesting that we go forward?
Yeah, I'd recommend that we see if we can secure capital funds for it.
Okay. All right, we can do that.
Okay, the sprinkler system, I guess we wanted to check on whether, you know, some items have been replaced. I was hoping, I'm hoping the good news is that the cold weather has left us unaffected.
That's correct. We have had no sprinkler issues in the recent past, again, knock on wood. Want to keep it that way. You had a question about the accelerators that have not been replaced yet? And my expectation is that when we do replace them, and I believe it's scheduled, is that we would want to then turn to the appropriated money from last year's town meeting for that expense. And it sounds like that is all doable.
That's true. Lynn Sibley has verified that funding is still available for the accelerators. And I guess the contractor is Red Hawk, and Bob is suggesting that we have them installed in January.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's no further action lines to take for that?
No.
All right, we look forward to the good news on that. There is the proposed FY '15 budget, and then under new business discussion items is a preliminary report on school choice. So Patty, are you handling the budget discussion?
I believe Patty-
Or is it with your voice? You're going to hand it over to Patty?
Patty will, and we wanted to respond. Nat had sent us a number of questions. This goes in conjunction with the budget regarding the budget, and we met earlier and came up with some responses. If you remember, last time, we presented the increase, and the committee was seeing it for the first time, and they just wanted to get a sense of it and take a look at it further. There was a question if the bottom line needed to be reduced by using some school choice funds, and the decision was that we would wait until further deliberations.
Right.
So do you want me to give you our responses to your questions?
Yeah, I had to just fill everybody in. I finally got some time to go through the budget at the end of the, later in December. And there were just a few things, technical things, that I didn't quite follow that I thought Patty might be able to pull up on. And there were a couple of projections I also wanted the administration to look into, although I didn't know whether it would be, if there's anything you could do in a timely manner for this meeting, or whether it would come up next meeting instead. But maybe if you just deal with the technical questions first, sort of line items in the budget as presented.
Okay, so I'm just going to go in order that you wrote it. There was a question about the retirement incentives-
Right.
And the increase of $16,025. Last year, we had no teacher retirements. This year, we have one teacher retiring at the end of school year in June, and that is for her, that is for her retirement. That is what that is allocated for.
Okay, so it's planned for a June 2014 retirement?
Right, so it's due to be paid in July of 2015 because she gave her timely notice.
Right.
Okay. There was questions about the maintenance of the building, contracted services being level funded at $17,000 for the first year, for the third year in a row.
Right.
For, so far this year, we've spent $81,21 through December 31, which is about 48 percent. And we do plan to expend all funds prior to the year end. In FY '13, we overspent this budget by 22 percent, or $4,780. We would like to recommend adding $5,000 to this year's budget to put us at last year's level funded, level funded to what we actually spent. Ms. Lesko is of the opinion that there is some preventative HVAC work we could do. As for the questions regarding the replacement of equipment, we will need some time to put that together, along with some cost estimates for replacement. And what we're proposing is that you give us this year to work on a five-year replacement plan that we will present to you either at the end of this year or the beginning of next fiscal year.
So just to clarify then, that line item, which is 422-9-1-98-40, that would be, you're calling that $17,000, or you want to add $5,000 to that value?
We want to add $5,000 to that before we approve it.
So that would bring it up to $22,000.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I'm a little confused, because when I look in the, you know, the budget book, that figure's already in here, but I guess it didn't make it in-
That one is heating. That's a different light item?
Oh, I'm sorry. Exact same.
But it's very close in value.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
All right.
I do make mistakes.
No, rarely.
There was a concern that the level, the field trips are being level funded because there was a notation in the budget books that transportation costs were increased. That was a notation from last year that we should have deleted.
Okay.
Okay? And the reason we maintained our funding is because in fiscal year '13, we only utilized 60 percent of the budget, and we have expended zero so far this year. So we feel that we are okay with the $2,600. Music, there was question about our music. We have Denise Gendron and Jacqueline Romaska. They're each budgeted at a .2 FTE for a total of two days of music instruction here at the school. Ms. Gendron teaches general musics to grades K to six, and Ms. Romaska teaches bands to grades four, five, and six.
Okay.
Now, that was related also to a question on your second email about a strings program.
Do you want to take that out now?
Sure. I did look in, the Deerfield, the Deerfield schools do have two days of strings, and both Sunderland and Conway have a half day of strings. If we were to bring back strings, it would probably, it cost us about $6,552, would be a half a day of strings, is what it would cost us.
And that's an estimate about around what we would need, based on the number of kids who take band and string instruments here?
And that's based on what Sunderland and Conway currently have, similar enrollment, so.
So it is something I'd like the committee to discuss and decide whether they would like to recommend an increase of that amount in the budget to make that possible, to have that during the school day. Can you remind us, the public hearing, when is that?
March.
It's in March.
March.
So really, our discussion vote is occurring-
February.
In February-
Correct.
At that meeting there.
Yeah.
Patty, do you have any preliminary thoughts on that?
You know, I didn't realize that the strings program wasn't funded in our budget. I think it's a good idea to do that. I think our kids deserve to have what the other towns are getting, so I'm in favor including that in our budget.
I support that idea, too. And I think that's, Patty, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that Sunderland just re-added it this past year-
They just did this year, and so it would leave Whately the only school that doesn't have it during the day.
And I can tell you that I've heard from two different parents whose strings, whose kids take strings after school, as well as the current strings instructor, who thought there would be benefits to having strings happen during the day rather than after school, more participation.
I think it'd create a participation.
Well, I'd like to see a budget with that attitude, please, I think we would like.
Thank you.
The other one was just the recording secretary. I didn't know.
You know, it's something that I do, and it actually helps me-
Okay.
-to become more familiar with the, with the agenda and really having to pay attention. It does mean that I don't participate in the discussions much, but that's okay. So I'm happy to continue doing it.
All right, well, I'm not concerned if you're not concerned about not being paid for taking minutes.
No.
The next question was in regard to our preschool salaries, which were listed on page 55, where they are correct. We are estimating a .5 salary of $32,766, from which tuitions will pay $12,000, leaving $20,766 to be funded by the Whately school budget. The analysis on page nine shows Whately paying $21,166 because that includes $400 line item for supplies.
Okay.
Not just wages. The number that is incorrect is on page nine, is the amount funded by the EC tuitions. The number showing is $21,550 and should be $12,000. I gave you new pages this evening for your books to update, and I three-hole punched them for you. The other thing, while I was reviewing this, the, there is a .5 instructional assistant, which is also funded by the Whately budget, but it's being included in the, in the general instructional assistance. So when we redo these numbers, I will pull that out, which is $11,267. So that puts the total amount of the early childhood program costs for Whately at $32,433, which is 74 percent of that budget. And the budget sheets will be corrected to show this when the final budget has been determined. Now, this goes in hand with your question about reinstating the full-day Whately program.
Right, just to know what the financial implications were. Now, I know that this is something that is of interest to Chris Sibley as well, so I would, I would think we would want to hold our major discussion where you can be present. But if you have any financial information at this point, I'm sure it would be of interest.
Well, what I can tell you is that we are paying, we're already subsidizing the program 74 percent with our, with our budget dollars. We have 12 children attending this year, the half-day program, and only bringing in $11,000. So we're, you know, we're hoping next year that we'll get, you know, we're getting fewer families who can afford the full price. And that, that's problematic. We also have more sped children being serviced in this program, and there is no fee for them. So I think what Mr. Christopher Lee and the superintendent and I would like to do is get more time to gather more information-
Sure.
-to put it together. Because if we're subsidizing 74 percent of a half-day program, I don't know-
We're looking at the fee structure. We are looking at the length of the day, and, but I think it's going to take some time, so I wouldn't want to ration to the recommendation.
I think when we had this discussion last spring, if my memory serves me correctly, sometimes it doesn't, I think we were talking somewhere about $20,000 in additional funds for us to run that program. And that's why we decided to go back to the half-day program.
If you were to have it remain as a full-time?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, I would like to know if there's a way to, in a timely fashion, sort of survey parent interest. I know that's always a hard thing to know when you're trying to survey people who aren't already in the school system. But we didn't have a chance to do that last year before having to make a decision. And so if, if there is a way to gauge what the interest is out there or is not out there, that would be a very helpful part in knowing, you know, what this would cost. And I do know that Chris would like to bring it up and have a discussion on it.
Okay. Well, I think we can try to gather some information. I mean, not be 100 percent, but-
Right, and it's, and no one is, no parent is actually committing at this time either, right? So it's all an estimate.
Okay.
And then lastly, you asked about the $2,700 in the maintenance of building account. We transferred that to custodial salaries because that historically has been where they're charged. So we will continue to use summer custodians to prepare the building. And if you look at page seven of nine, the budget detail, you can see the flip between the two accounts. There's an overage of $2,720 in one and a shortage of $2,720 in the other.
I like how politely Patty's pointing out that something slipped by me there. Very good. Okay.
And then I think the last thing was reintroducing expanded world language instruction. I believe, Mr. Christopher Lee, you do have Spanish right now?
Yeah, so right now, we have conversational Spanish. Stefania, who's also our school counselor, once a week, I believe she's, this year, doing first through sixth grade. And I think that might have been last year, she was K through five, and she couldn't have all the time in her schedule. Your questions actually prompted us to meet and talk about a lot of things that are going to be helpful to us, including that we should pull that part of her job out into a separate part of the budget, so we know what we're, what we're expending on world languages as opposed to her services at our counselor in the school. So we intend to do that. What I can't tell you right now is exactly how many hours a week she devotes to that. And right now, it's only Spanish. And it's conversational. She teaches our youngest kids language, the words, you know, basic Spanish language through poetry, music primarily, stories. And it's one of the most fun things I see in this building, quite frankly. Kids love to learn languages and should, I don't know if the day will come when we expand beyond a single language like Spanish. But certainly, you know, that, that type of enrichment in this school is valuable, and we appreciate that if Stefania does that for us now. But we are carving out a piece of her time. She's a four-day a week employee for us. And on the day that she teaches Spanish, I know she's also doing her counseling job, you know, squeezing it all in. And, and quite frankly, she brings an energy and a joy for the, for learning languages to it that's really wonderful. At some point, I know it's very hard for you to come during the day to our building, but if you ever wanted to come during, during the day that she teaches, it's a lot of fun to watch her lessons. The kids really enjoy it. So I'm a supporter of doing something more if we can beyond that. But we would probably want to discuss what that might look like, whether it's, you know, the opportunity to learn another language or expanding what we do with Spanish, but that's a conversation probably for another time.
Do you have any thoughts on?
Oh, you know, I love the idea because that's the time to teach kids a language. When you get older, forget it, it's so hard. So if we could expand it, that would be wonderful. But, you know, I think we really need to have an analysis of what the proposal would look like.
We would certainly look forward to that. I know that, again, might be a thing where you're asking for the year to think about it and come with more recommendations.
The only thing I want to just throw out there is a possible concern, we're adding strings, and if we're looking to explore Spanish and-
Right. I'm just looking at the options, the things that we long wanted, but had to defer in some way or another, or that-
I think that, I'm sorry, the tension clearly comes with time on learning for our other subjects. And you should know that what she does now is, I believe they're 15 minutes, you know, 15 minutes where she goes in there and teaches some new language, new vocabulary, back and forth. Again, with the older kids, she, we all look her speaking in Spanish and expect Spanish answers. With the younger kids, it's more, but it's brief and it's once a week.
Right.
But it's better than nothing.
I just wanted to go back to the build, maintenance of buildings. We did have two pieces of equipment that we did want to put before you to also be included on the capital expenditure request to the town, and I'll let Mr. Christopher Lee address those.
Can we take those up now?
So, again, it seemed to be a nice coincidence that you asked about some of those things at this point in time. I thought I brought an email in with me, but yeah, I did. Anyway, I have to tell you if I can't find it because I know, I know the numbers. We have two machines. One is a burnisher. They're both floor machines. They're both intended for maintaining floors. One of them definitely needs to be replaced. The other could, we could look at a repair, but Bob Lesko estimated that we'd probably spend half the price of a new machine if we took this one out to be repaired.
For furniture.
And it's probably a 15 or older machine. Yeah, there's two of them that we've, oh, here we go. Yeah, hang on a second. Okay, so, so let's see. One is a burnisher, and the other is a scrubber. Okay, so one's a polishing machine, the other's a cleaning machine. And new, new prices for machines like this, one would cost about $7,000. Bob actually had a price of $6,772, but his, his source or dealer there talked about that being a price through the end of last year. So I imagine we can hopefully get something close to that. So let's say about seven grand for one machine, and then the other machine, about $5,800, so another $6,000. So we're looking at about $13,000 if we've replaced both machines. I could be mistaken about one of them, but one of them, I'm certain, has been here since the building was built. So we've gotten our use from it, no question about it. The other one might have a little bit less of a lifespan, but at least a decade, you know, if not more, for the other machine. So we are, we are asking that we also propose to the town capital expenditure to purchase two machines.
So both of these are, are working, but need repair?
No, one of them is not working at all.
One's not working at all?
Right, and the other needs repair. And, you know, we assume it's working but not working in any way, as it should be.
All right, so it's a matter of some urgency there?
Yeah, the other one is definitely going to be needed during the summer months, for sure. But I know that Ralph also uses them during, you know, longer breaks, tries to get some of the floors done.
Right.
But we can live without that until the summer, but certainly by then, we would need to have both in working order.
Do you think it would fit the criteria for a capital improvement request?
I, my honest opinion, I think they're going to say that it's probably something that should be in the school budget.
That was my fear.
I mean, that's just my guess, but I would think that's what my colleagues on that committee will say.
Well, we could put it in the budget and then, and then have our conversation about how much money we want to use to reduce it with school choice funds. Because we, you know, we're still, we had given you two proposals, one to reduce it by $50,000 and one to reduce it by 100, give, bringing us down to 1.53. If there's a, if you want me to add those in and then give me a target of what you'd like to hit to present to the town, I can work on those scenarios.
So effectively, we'd be asking if we could afford to pay for it as school choice.
So then that would be that we'd be adding $6,552 for the strings, $5,000 for the maintenance of the building, and $13,000 for equipment. So that's $18,27,000. And then, so we're at 4.53 right now. If we add $27,000, that will probably bring us to about six-something, and then we can talk about what we can reduce it with school choice funds.
I think for a one-time purchase like these items, it's a very good use of school choice funds. I don't know what your opinion is on that.
You know, which one is actually burnt out, you know, Pete?
Yeah, I can tell you.
I think it's the burnisher that's burnt out.
The battery burnisher.
Yeah, and the scrubber that's still working. Because I know they brought over, I think from Frontier, they brought over a burnisher and borrowed it, which gets a little tricky, too.
Okay, so the burnisher is burnt out and the scrubber is struggling.
Yes.
And the scrubber, I think, could use more in the summer.
Yes.
And the burnisher as well.
Yeah.
And Bob is real familiar because he's purchased one of each of these, I think, at Frontier, maybe for Deerfields, so-
But then the past year.
Because I think we're all hitting that same point of, you know, the age of our schools and some of the equipment we bought, so it's not surprising that we've had to make purchases across the district.
So you brought up the issue of target value for the budget part after reductions from school choice. And if you could remind us again, the timeline for that decision for us there?
Well, we would have to have an approved budget, right, by, by February-
Correct.
-so that we could have our public meeting on the, in March.
Right.
So what I was thinking is if you gave me a direction, and I can work up those scenarios, and then we can email back and forth, we'll be able to have that conversation in February to adopt our budget.
Okay. And those two options, one of them was a $100,000 reduction, one was a $50,000.
Correct. And we can come up with other scenarios. We're not married to those.
Right.
If you want to say to me, you know, let's show a 2.5 percent increase from last year's budget, then that's what we'll work with.
Well, that would be a useful exercise. That's a number the Select Board and Finance Board understand very well. I understand that it might need to be above or below that once we try to fold in, like if we're adding strings, if we're paying for a burnisher and things like that. But then we would be able to, if you were able to prepare a number at that, a projection at that number for February, then we could, including the changes we discussed tonight, that would provide us, I think, pretty useful guidance for, for February discussion. The vote on the, I'm still a little confused about our timetable because I didn't keep that chart.
You continue deliberating in February.
Right.
Your final vote is not until March.
Is not after the public hearing.
Correct.
All right. So I think that we could then give you some further feedback in the February meeting, you know, after Chris has had a chance to weigh in as well.
Well, the only other thought I have is that if you put that equipment in the budget, okay, and then we reduce the budget overall by school choice, you know, are we better off just outright allocating that money from school choice outside the budget?
What I was going to recommend is for you to approve that tonight.
You know what I'm saying? I don't know which way is better for us.
If you approve it tonight for us to use school choice funds from, from this year, I will subtract it from this year's budget, and then I will work forward into the FY '15 budget with the school choice funds remaining.
I would support that.
Okay.
You're talking about just for the machines?
Right.
Just for the two machines.
Let's just, let's just get the broken things replaced.
I mean, we have to have.
And then do the strings and the $5,000.
Right, those definitely need to be in the budget.
Okay.
I understand we might reduce the assessments by applying school choice funds.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, so you need to vote on using, why don't we say 13.5, just to be on the safe side from school choice?
So moved.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you for all your, your flexibility and quickness.
Well, that's what we're here for.
All those responses. I should, while we're on the topic, I would mention, you've probably already seen this in your office, but one showed up in my email as well, that there's an accelerated repair program. It's for windows, roofs and boilers. I don't know if any of that qualifies for us. But the opening for applications is January 10th and the closing is February 14th. And then there's another one for many other sort of things like the eleventh. Maybe this is more appropriate for Frontier's building.
I handed that off to Bob Lesko.
Yeah, and I think that's what we want to do, like, you know, like we put that capital plan together for Frontier. We'd like to have Mr. Lesko do one of those for each of the elementary schools that we can come to you with a plan and, and go forward. And then, so if anything meets this, then when it's ready, when it does come out and we voted it and we can go to the town council, town meeting and get it all, you know, get it all prepared.
Right, because I don't know what our boiler lifetime is, for example.
It's got to be reaching the end of its life if it was put in, in what year?
Twenty-two years ago? I'm hoping, I'm hoping it's thirty-four.
It has been replaced.
It has been.
Oh, it has. What about our roof, has that been replaced?
Yeah, well, certainly improvements have been made.
So that's what we need to do is, is have Mr. Lesko prepare it five years.
But it's been a while on the boiler, but we did have, it cracked. And that was, there was work done on it, I'm pretty sure, hopefully replaced.
No, that sounds familiar now.
But I mean, if it's something that we can, we've done in other towns is that we've set up a fund where we put, and we ask the town to put fifty thousand dollars in a year, knowing that in three years we're going to need the money.
We were actually covered on our insurance with that one.
For the boiler?
Yeah, we didn't get much of anything through because a storm with really high winds came in near the very end of the life and shingles and then cracked them all apart, sort of leaks. And that was when we came up with the money to come up with the metal roof. Then the program appeared a couple of years after that.
Timing.
Yeah. You have to plan your disasters. It's a year or two, right?
It was installed just as I came on as your principal. This is my fifth year here.
Time flies.
Five years.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Okay.
That was the beginning of my fifth year, so four years ago.
All right, well, I guess, is there any further discussion about the budget itself?
Nope, just wait and see what we neglect next meeting.
All right, let's move on to preliminary report on school choice.
I gave you a report tonight that shows both our school choice sending and our school choice receiving. And as you can see, at the end of fiscal year thirteen in June, we were sending out fifteen students. And this year, as of December, we're only sending out twelve. The FTEs for the June number were 12.47. And the reason that differs from the number of students is because they didn't go out for the full year. We had to pay 12,264 in the SED increment and 62,350 in tuition for a total of 74,614 dollars the town paid in school choice sending. The preliminary number for this year is for 12 students, which is a reduction of three. The SED increment though is increasing at 15,856, tuition at 60,000. So that's a total of 75,876 or an increase of 1242 dollars. So then next we take a, we take a look at where are they going from here? We've got three students this year in Conway, three students in Deerfield, four in Hatfield, one in Leverett and one in North Hampton to, to take up the 12 students.
So half of them are within Union 38. So these are just issues of convenience or?
Now, for school choice receiving, at the end of last year, we had 54 students. We took in 70,790 dollars in SED increment, tuition of 256,150 for a total of 326,940. Our preliminary numbers this year is that we have 49 students, so we are down five. Our SED increment is dropping to 35,475. Our tuition would be 245, bringing us to a total of 28475. And I believe that's pretty close to what we projected. I think we projected 288,000 in revenue. So I will adjust that when we do the new figures, right, 288, I will switch that down to the 28475. Now again, that could change depending on what the SED, what we end up with more kids before the end of the, end of the year or the SED increment does increase. So then we take a look at where are these students coming from? Well, we get six from Deerfield, two from East Hampton, one from Irving, seventeen from Gilmonigu, four from Greenfield, one from Hadley, ten from Hatfield, two from North Hampton, one from Orange, four from Sunderland and one from Ware. So of the 49 students, 10 of them come from other Union 38 schools. So this was just some data that we received and we just, we put it in this format. We thought it would be interesting for you to look at, to see where they're coming from and where they're going.
How many charter school kids we've got going now, you know?
That I do not know.
I don't.
I only, I did squint towards, I don't know if charter came up.
It's always been real low. I don't, it could be there's none.
There could be there's none, and that's why I didn't see the reports.
Could you listen to that for next meeting?
Marty, the student that was recently approved for homeschooling was a charter student.
That's true.
That's the only one?
That's the only one that I know of. So I would say at this point in time, we probably don't have any.
Yeah, please do. Any other questions on that?
Nope.
Chris, it's very helpful. Thanks. And we move on at this point then to reports. And I hear that these are very short.
I don't have one for you.
Okay, that was the shortest?
That's the short.
I have a very short one as well. Just to let you know that I've been participating in the Long Range Planning Committee. There's been two meetings I was able to attend, one is another one set for Thursday.
Okay.
I think the committee is moving at a, sort of slow and deliberate pace. And I think their hope is to have some recommendations in time to help guide planning in the future year. Okay, rather than, certainly nothing for this year. But the three, the three or four things that are, keep coming up in discussion is, you know, what's the projected resident foundation enrollment for, say, the next 10 years? The committee wants to, is looking at that's on the order of one life cycle. And it's almost grades one through 12 or so. And this is a, 10 to 12 years is a reasonable planning frame that, where the projections don't become completely unreliable. And that UMass had made a linear extrapolation sort of from the past 10 to 20 years, what populations might be doing. But that they cautioned the numbers were fairly unreliable to smaller town guys, which is a problem for Union 38 then. I know that NASDAQ offered a service and you were looking into, Marty.
Yeah, I still don't have those numbers yet.
And, and I, my, I would, I would urge that if we could get some numbers from NASDAQ in a timely fashion, see what you can do to encourage that. Because otherwise, the committee will be basing it on these extrapolations that UMass themselves.
When is your next meeting?
Thursday.
Okay, might probably won't be anything by Thursday.
Because they, they claim they offer this as a service to us, as part of our membership. It would be really good to have those projections, I guess, they include birth rates and they look at that as well as SED projections. So the, the committee has a need for that kind of information. They're also looking at what would the year-to-year percentage changes in town assessments be? You can either look at that for each school system independently or totaling it pre-K through 12. If you had either a K through six or a K through 12 regional system instead of a present or age. If all you did was apportion costs according to the ed reform agreements, if you were a region, not changing salary structure or anything, what would the year-to-year fluctuations in individual towns be? Because the one major source of fluctuations is when, if there's a SED expense that an individual town is carrying as an elementary school student, sixth grade, and then that child goes to seventh grade. There's a big, there can be a substantial drop in the original sending towns assessment and an increase in the other three. And so if, if it were K through 12 or if it was assessed that way, then that through K through six, I believe then you would already be distributing those costs among the other towns. It wouldn't reduce them, but it might change the size of the fluctuations in, in the sticker shock. So there's questions like, would that make any effect? You know, overall also, does it make any difference in whether a town's are seeing more steady increases? You know, 1%, 2%, 3%, 4% as opposed to 18 one year and negative 4 another or something like that? That's a, that's a concern of the committee.
I got a question. I don't get you on that assessment part when you're saying about a SED student going from sixth grade to seventh grade.
Well, for example.
That won't change the assessments.
No, it won't at all, but it will change the assessment to an individual town. So that, for example.
No, the percentage would stay the same.
Well, for example, suppose there's a hundred thousand dollar expense that's being borne by one town.
Okay.
For a sixth grader. And let's suppose that it remains a hundred thousand dollar expense the next year. And then for some reason the towns were all, costs for SED students were equally distributed among the four towns in seventh grade. Then it would now be a 25,000 dollar charge for each town there.
It would be based on your percentage.
Yes, right, if, that's what I said. I said, if, in the simplest case, if they all had equal populations, right?
Oh, oh, alright.
Then, then you, one town would go from paying 100% to 25% and the other would see 25% of that. So that one town would be dropping from 100,000 to 25 and the others would see 25,000 dollar increases.
Well, that's not necessarily true, even if, if the enrollments were equal because the, the formula for the town contributions differ.
Of course, of course, but if I'm trying to pick the simplest description, maybe it will be that one town sees a 20,000 dollar increase or a 35,000 dollars instead of a 25.
And then someone else might experience, right?
But you will see, one town see a substantial drop and the other three see a substantial increase.
Correct.
Last year, for example, if there had been no changes in SED assessments with children moving from sixth to seventh grade, the Frontier budget would have been under 2.5%. So it, it, it makes for larger fluctuations and that's only one example of one situation.
Right, but if we look at the, the Frontier budget went up, what, like 6%? 6.83% but some towns experienced an 18% difference in the assessment.
Right, and, and that was in part because of some expenses that were going to one town, were now going to.
No, it's because of the five-year rolling enrollment, because the enrollment changes per town and also the contract, towns' contributions. The only thing that affects the assessments are the differences in enrollment and the differences in the town contributions. It has nothing to do with the actual cost of the budget.
Yes, I know, I understand that part of it. However, if there are, if, leaving off school choice and things like that, right? One question is, if it was a K through three to six district and you had the same number of students coming in, but you were to allocate costs according to the rules for regional school districts, would that make a difference in what each town saw for their assessment for K through six education or not? Right, that's one question. Another is, another is a question on, on top of that, the issue of special ed, which.
So if we were a K to six, would the, then the Frontier assessment be more, less volatile because we are already on a K to six assessment?
Or, or more importantly, would the total town assessment, K through 12, be less volatile?
Are they looking for more predictability?
The interest there is, I think, in predictability and, and planning in terms of smaller changes in year-to-year assessments on individual town level. Because the problem is that setting a budget at 4% or 2% overall doesn't tell you, as you're saying, particularly as enrollments are shifting, what individual towns would be. Another question is like, five years is our practice, is that required? What if we had a 10-year average or something, right? So one issue has to do with, what is the enrollment going to be like? You know, are we, what size should our school system be 12 years from now? How many teachers for each grade are we going to acquire? Another is, what about this year-to-year variation in individual assessments to, assessments to individual towns? And can there, can the size of that variation be smaller in some way? Would, are there changes like from regionalization that would, would that make a serious difference or not? Either in the regular budget or in the special ed? Another question has to do with, if I can read my own writing here. Yeah, was again the question of, at what point does it make sense to accept school choice students? At what point does it make sense to change the number of classes you have per grade? And some towns are looking at it as the question, well, Deerfield has multiple classes per grade, right? Whaley does not. So sometimes this is a decision within an individual school. But if you had, if we're looking at, at a region as a whole, then the question would be, you know, how do you know, at, at what point, how do you decide how many classes per grade you're going to have? So it comes back to that population question. So I think they're, they're worried about, there is also the thing about just overall cost of things. You know, and are there things that, are there buildings we don't need or buildings that we do need yourself? So those are the things, the overall cost, the fluctuation, which is, gets a lot of the attention. And what, do we have any sounder basis for projection? And so those are things that are coming up and that we're, that the committee is looking for data on.
Okay, well, I'll see what I can do as far as NASDAQ information, try to get that.
So that's, that for me.
That was your brief report, Matt?
Well, it was brief, but there were questions. I noticed you carefully refrained. Okay, yes. And it, there's only been a couple of discussions and there's a lot of issues, so.
Yeah.
Many of them are just, even knowing what data is available. Anything from, from you, Marty?
I do, I passed out a brief report. And actually it dovetails with what you had talked about, that we will have a special meeting in the Frontier Regional School Committee on January 24, third. This will be all for town select boards and finance committees. And we're going to hear from the two subcommittees, Long Range Planning and Capital Improvement. I also had a conversation with Steve Coolick because I, I thought it might be timely since the state budget's coming out on the 22nd, that he could give us some insight. And he would like to be part of this. And I talked to him a little bit about the, you know, the school choice dollar dilemma, where we've been throwing more money from school choice to subsidize the budget. And now that the money is becoming more stagnant, you know, what do we do? So, so he's going to be there. So I think it, you know, it's, it's always difficult because there's so many people, but I think it's a good opportunity to share information. And of course, you know, I just had to throw in about the weather. We've had three snow days already, you know, two hour delay. And it's only January 20, or January 6th. So our current last day of school right now is June 17th. But don't hold your breath, we want to have another one. And I just wanted to let you know that there is a typo on this one. It's Steve Hemman. Patty and I met with Steve Hemman, that's H-E-M-M-A-N. He's the executive director of Mass, of MARS, the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools. And because I am new to this position and Patty has not worked in the regional system beforehand, I wanted to make sure we were on the right track. He, he was surprised that we start the budget process so early. Because he said, you don't have a lot of information in December, which is true.
Of course, we also don't have a lot of information in May.
I know. So, you know, he did recommend that we, we at least have a conversation about that. I, I kind of like an elongated period of time to have the discussion, but that misses recommendation, so.
I found it valuable too. Of course, we're hearing from the Select Board and Finance Board, so we should start even earlier, like the previous.
Well, I know, yeah. And so, you know, when we first put this budget out, we didn't have anything from the state on the school choice numbers. We won't have, you know, anything till the end of January on the state and that's not final. So. I didn't type it. So I'll correct that too. So that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. All right.
Wow.
Thank you.